Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Waukegan City Council Meeting for this Tuesday, February 16th, 2010. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Conkin.
President.
Alderman Moisio.
President.
Alderman Figueroa.
President.
Alderman Newsom.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman Needham.
President.
Alderman Larson.
President.
President and accounted for. Thank you. As we go into our moment of silence, I would like everybody to keep in mind Bruce Kennedy is one of our valued employees and he, his mother passed away. And we just, everybody, keep the family in mind, please, during the moment of silence. Thank you. Could we all rise? Thank you. Could you join me in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Well. Okay, all right. On my mayor's comments, just real quickly, we had a new restaurant that opened downtown over the weekend. Brick, kind of an interesting name. We had a great turnout. There were approximately 400 people that showed up on Saturday. And they've done a real nice job with the, the way it's decorated, the menu that they've put up is great. And as is, you know, the rest of our restaurants too, but this is something new. And I would encourage you to, if you get a chance, stop by there for lunch. They have breakfast as well. We're trying to encourage them to do Sunday brunch. We're hoping that maybe that he'll pick up on that in time. So it was, it's a very, very nice location. It's in the old Bachi Restaurant. And if anybody who's been in there before knows that it's a really a great environment. So I hope everybody will get a chance to not only visit Brick, but also the rest of our fine restaurants downtown. Today, I was lucky enough to have been invited and I attended with Alderman Rivera, the Bank of America ribbon cutting out at Fountain Square. So it's nice to have them officially online. They've been open for a few weeks, but this was their, their official hard opening. So they had a good crowd there. It's a very nice facility. It's a LEED, they're going for a LEED certification, which is a term regarding green building philosophy. And it's something that we are encouraging here in the city of Waukegan. So I was very happy to hear that they did build that along those lines.
No, it's here, it's here.
I would like to commend all of the people who worked so hard from our Public Works Department to clear the streets of snow in those storms that we had. Tom, I had nothing but praise for your guys. So I want you to know that. There were, people were telling me, this is the best the streets have looked in years. And I think maybe our parking ban might have helped a little bit.
Yes, we all called it was helped massively with the summer.
They did a great job. And we want them, we want you to let your guys know, I think everybody up here probably would agree with that. We want, wanted to let you know that your guys are, were very, very grateful for all the hard work and that odd schedule that they had to follow too. You know, going to bed at nine o'clock or nine thirty, then getting back up to get out at four o'clock's not the easiest thing to do. So we want to thank them for doing that. We appreciate your leadership there as well. The Waukegan Police Department and District 60 are working closer together now. We've begun what I believe is going to be a long-term relationship between our police department, the city of Waukegan, and District 60 in helping with some of the issues that everybody probably became aware of over the last few weeks in regards to some violence that occurred at the school. And we're in this for the long haul. So we intend to do our best to make sure that our kids and our, that are attending our schools are safe and that the schools are places of learning and joy as opposed to places of fear and gang activity. So we want to thank you, Chief, for all that you're doing on that and your guys as well. Thank you. We had a great tour of charter schools last week. I took another group in and they enjoyed seeing what those folks are doing at the Chicag, the charter school systems in Chicago. It's something that we're hoping to, over long-term, bring to the city of Waukegan. I will be hosting a public forum probably in late March or early April to where the school district can come and the folks from the charter schools can come. We can have the public here. We can have an open discussion as to what charter schools are all about and what they would mean for the city of Waukegan. So we'll keep everybody posted on that. We are looking for corporate sponsors for our International Latino Film Festival, which we're sharing with the city of Chicago. And this is quite a big event. It's something that is being held April 23rd through the 25th. And we've got some nice flyers that we'd be going out to the public and will be, if anybody knows of any potential corporate sponsors, either up here at the dais or anybody in the public, we certainly would love to hear from you. Any ideas you have would be certainly welcome. We do have some special events coming up here in the city of Waukegan. We've got a number of events scheduled, the Genesee Theater. We have Lisa Lampanelli, a comedian, the annual CLC Salute to Gospel on the 27th. We've got Willie Nelson and family showing up March 21st. REO Speedwagon for the Jerry Attics among us is playing on the 26th of March. Lord of Dance is back on April 20th and others. And we also have a lineup of films. On the 19th, those of you that are Marx Brothers fans, we're showing one of the great movies of all time, A Night at the Opera. So I think that if you've never seen an actual film copy of an old Marx Brothers film, it's worth showing, showing up for this. Young Frankenstein is following on the 25th and 26th. Raiders of the Lost Ark is on the 5th and 6th of March. Indiana Jones and the Last Crusade is following that. And then John Wayne and another classic, The Quiet Man, which is showing the 12th of March. Citizen Kane is showing on the 25th. That's one, considered one of the top films of all time. And it's a wonderful movie. And if you've only seen it on television, you've never really seen it. It is quite an amazing film. The library, February 4th, I'm sorry, February 19th, 2021st is having their used book sale, books, movies, and music. It's going to be located across in the library at 220 Clayton Street, which is one of the storefronts in the parking garage. On February 22nd, we have the bone marrow and blood drive here at the city hall, 10:00 AM until 6:30. And we have several families who are searching for a life-saving bone marrow match for a family member who is dying of leukemia or rare blood cancer. The best hope of a cure is finding in a marrow donor. And I want to thank Diane Hewitt for putting a lot of effort into this, as well as Dave Motley in working to make this hopefully a successful event. February 24th, we have a home ownership made easy, 3:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Bradbury Room at the Waukegan Public Library. Basically, purchase foreclosure and repossess homes for rock-bottom prices. Be homes in Waukegan, you have to be pre-qualified. There'll be a home buyer's tax credit, homes from as little as $100 down. I don't think you can even get a car for $100 down, so that's a pretty good deal. So more information about that could be obtained through Ezel Robbins here at the city hall at 847-599-2530. Then, on March 13th, at 6:00 PM, we have the Ninth Annual Warez Cup. That is our police department versus our fire department. And that's Saturday, March 13th, at 6:00 PM over at Waukegan East Campus, 1011 Washington Street. The tickets are an astronomical amount, $3 each. So I'm hoping everybody will get a chance to get out there and enjoy this. It should be a lot of fun. Let's see. Dave Motley always provides me with a great deal of material, so I try to wade through it. Last year, we have, this is, this year is celebrating the 100th year of scouting in the city of Waukegan. And there is a sports and scouting breakfast. While it's not in Waukegan, it does help benefit Waukegan scouting troops. That is February 26th from 8:00 to 9:30 AM at Keeline Clove and Gurn, or Keeline Cove in Gurnee. So if you're interested or want any more information, you can contact them at 847-748-9158. And that does it for the mayor's comments. We now move to audience time.
Your honor.
Yes, Alderman Figueroa.
Just a clarification on that scouting breakfast. That's free to the public, but we want to do and get community leaders in there so we can sell scouting to them.
Great.
But I have tickets. But it's free tickets, of course.
Free tickets. Okay. Thank you, Alderman. I know Alderman Figueroa was involved with local scouting and he did bring that to my attention, as did the young lady who now is kind of one of the regional directors for scouting. So we wanted to make sure we got a little mention of that. All right, first up for audience time is Mr. Jack Burleson, 35845 Northern. Mr. Burleson, if you could please come to the mic.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for listening to me tonight. I'd like to apologize in advance if I sound confrontational or offend you, but the thing I wish to talk about is very dear to my heart. There's a proposed legislation, our committee, and now in order to annex property that is now surrounded by the city of Waukegan, but not necessarily in small chunks. Personally, the one that my property is connected to is probably eight to 10 acres in size, which may not sound much, but it's a lot to the people in the area. The additional services that would be provided to me sound good on the, on the surface, but as we all know, the economy in the shape that it's in today, times are hard and money is hard to come by, which I know all of you know this from trying to get the city to survive. My pocketbook is no different than y'all's. I cannot afford an increase in my taxes. It could mean literally losing my home. I am unemployed at this time. I'm in the construction business, very last thing that probably will come back in our economy. I want you to know that I have lived in this area for 26 years. I bought this property on purpose as a county property. My passion and hobby is working on old cars. Now, I'm 100% legal in the county. I keep my property very clean. My neighbors all come by on a regular basis to talk to me and, and see what I'm doing and enjoy my hobby with me. If I'm a next into the city, this will not be permitted by y'all. You will not allow it, although I am perfectly legal in the city. Again, I'm trying not to be confrontational. I understand that there's a problem with the lines are trying to square off areas of the map to make it so that the fire and police and all can find my property. I've lived there 26 years and I've never, ever had a problem with them finding my property. I don't see where this should be a controlling factor in your annexation of these properties. I feel, and again, this may sound confrontational, that the tax money may be what you're looking at, not so much as squaring off a line. I don't feel that you get that much tax revenue into your city over residential property. It's the commercial properties that pay. I don't, so you're not going to recoup the large amounts of money that you think that you might. And I'm sure if you looked into this closer, you would see that once you pay the services of the, the garbage pickup and the police and fire and all of that, which I'm paying for on my own and I'm willing to keep doing that, is going to come away from whatever advantage you might get. My main concern among all of this is this year, I'm having to turn in some of my retirement benefits to come up with the money to pay for the taxes that I'm paying already. I want you to understand that you literally could be putting people out of their homes. This area is an area of people that have lived there for years, 26 years, and there's people that was there long before I got there. They're all on fixed incomes. I understand how hard money is to come by and believe me, I can appreciate that. But you've got to understand, our pockets are no bigger than yours and I would appreciate your consideration of that when you vote on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burleson. Mr. William Burleson, 35845, again, I believe it's the same address, North Northern Avenue, Waukegan.
Again, I'd like to thank the meeting for allowing us time to speak here. You guys are very busy. Just to reiterate the same points, mostly I'll try not to take too much of your time. I've actually brought a map of the area. Highlighted in green is the locations in question. It's a very small area. It doesn't look like that much area, but those are people's homes. As my father so eloquently said, those are people who could lose their homes over a decision that has very little benefit to the city, but drastic consequences of the people that would affect. We have wells and septic. We don't need sewer. The people there are obviously getting water and their plumbing goes somewhere. They're not a drain on the city's resources. When we have trouble, the fire department shows up. The police, they come there, not from the city of Waukegan, but from Gurnee or the sheriff's department. We don't need your services. We can't afford your services. It will put people out of their homes. I would just like you to please consider the human face on this. I, I know it seems like a simple decision for you, but these are people whose, whose lives can be drastically affected, even ruined by this. And please take your time and really consider the consequences of, of this annexation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burleson. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Art Lake, business address 300 Lakehurst, residential address 25408 Daring. Mr. Lake, please come to the podium.
Thank you, your honor, city council members. Once again, we're simply here in support of our application for the conditional use permit, which are items number 11, BNC. Mr. Jim Stumpf of Arlington Race Track is here with me today. I own the Sundance alone, as, as you're well aware of. And we're just here to answer any questions that might arise. Hopefully, there aren't any after all these meetings that we've attended, but if there are, we're here to answer those. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street.
Yeah, Mr. Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan. I just wanted to make mention that I heard some of the announcements that you was making and everything, which is good. I also wanted to make mention of some announcements with this month, which is set aside for the celebration of Black History. There's a couple of events that are going on. If anybody is interested, that'd be at the Malcolm X College. There's a Black History program that's going on with some African dance. Also, at the Disabo Museum, there are some things that are going on. And if anybody would like further information on that, you can get with me. And also, for the listening audience, you could reach us at 773-510-1713. And further in the spirit of this month, I'd just like to share with you in brief, a little known Black History fact, which I shared a couple of years ago. It says, in the early 50s, Reverend Darby had tried several times to register to vote, but was denied several times his right to vote. He would not accept, uh, he would not accept the statement, "You did not qualify," and filed a suit in the state of Mississippi from Jefferson Davis County, Prentice, Mississippi, the right to be able to register to vote without having to interpret the Constitution of the state of Mississippi. He won the suit and that gave Negroes the right to vote as all other citizens. That was Mr. Henderson Darby, which was, which is my mother's dad, my maternal granddad. Information regarding that suit, it can be found in Henderson Darby versus the state of Mississippi, where the plaintiff himself was represented by none other than Thurgood Marshall, and that was in the year of 1958. So if anybody would like information or a copy of that, you can see me, I'll be glad to extend a copy to you. And that's a little Black History. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. That was very interesting. Appreciate that. All right. That will conclude our audience time. Thank you all for your comments. Very well put and we appreciate the fact that you're willing to come to speak your, your mind tonight. We'll take a motion to accept the minutes by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Under resolution and proclamations, we have a presentation by Mr. Ed Link on his new book about the city of Waukegan. So if you'd like to come up to the podium, which by the way, my wife just picked up about a week or so ago and it's very nice.
Okay. I'm Sarah Griffin. I'm president of the Waukegan Historical Society. And we, along with Ed Link, have worked very hard for the last couple of years to commemorate the 150th birthday of the city of Waukegan, which is coming to a close next week on the 23rd of February. We're very, very proud of the work that Ed has done and several volunteers. We also have Ty Rohr, who is our museum director for the Waukegan History Museum. And tonight, we're very pleased to present each of the aldermen and the mayor a copy of this book. And I'd like to introduce Ed and we're going to present this book to you and also tell you that there's order forms and books available in the lobby and we're going to be having a book signing here at city hall on the 23rd. The time, Ty?
Four to six.
Four to six. So ladies and gentlemen, Ed Link.
Thank you. Since Sarah said everything, I don't have anything to say. So why don't you hand out the books, Ty? The whole purpose of it was, as Sarah mentioned, to commemorate the city because there's so much history in the city, it barely fits into one book. That doesn't mean that I'm going to write another one, believe me. But the interest has been overwhelming. We've had a lot of favorable response to the book and anything you care to ask or discuss, I'd be happy to talk about. After you've had a chance to look at it, of course.
Well, you might want to check your inside front cover because they were signed by the author, but I ended up getting Alderman Figueroa's accidentally, so we'll maybe have to swap these books around a little bit during the course of the meeting, so.
Well, intermingling works in all situations.
That's, that's true.
I got the right one.
You got the right one. Okay. Do we have any questions?
Gosh, thank you.
Any comments or questions?
I, I do want to make a comment, Mayor. The Historic Society is very near and dear to the Larson family. And to see a wonderful production published by the Historic, Historical Society truly tells not only the citizens of Waukegan, but the citizens of the world, what we are all about and what we have had to offer to this world. And I think it's a wonderful achievement, Ed. And I'm going to look through this book and I'm going to ask you some questions because there's probably something in here I, I would want to know more about.
And there's probably all sorts of things that I made mistakes on too, so you could point those out. I have no problem with that.
I'll blame that on Sarah.
And I know you know what I'm talking about, so.
Blame that on Sarah for her editing. But Ty and the entire staff of the Historical Society, it's a labor of love, I know. And it's incredible that you pulled this off for our 150th anniversary. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looks wonderful. I can say that the printing quality on this is absolutely fabulous. It just looks gorgeous.
Yeah, I, I did the writing, but an awful lot of other people contributed the expertise on putting it together and they should be credited as they are in the book.
Great.
Because I certainly couldn't have done it by myself.
Good job, Ed. Thank you very much for the copies. I'm sure everybody here appreciates them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hold on just one moment, please. Well, at this point then, what I'm going to do is ask my corporation counsel to open up the possibility of using our omnibus agenda system, which allows us to vote on numerous items all at once and kind of compresses the timeframe of the meeting a little bit. So corporation counsel, please.
Yes. As we all know, the use of the omnibus procedure must be unanimous among the city council. So my first question would be, is there any alderman this evening that has an objection to using the omnibus, at least for some of this agenda?
I'm fine. I know there was a question, you know, in regards to public works with item A and with the motion, especially with the language at the end for item A, which says with the, the engineering, the amount of $39,797.47, with the actual amount determined based upon the services received as presented. Alderman Needham had a question on that.
Sure.
He would like to see if we can have some sort of a cap on that, not to exceed.
Yeah. Let's.
And I spoke with Ron before we started and he said, there's no problem, we can do that.
Let's, let's exempt item 7A from the omnibus. Are there other items that any alderman feels would best be dealt with individually? We are exempting the vote on the bond issue, which would be under Finance Committee, item C. And we are also exempting item A under 11 ordinances resolutions. That would be the conditional use permit for the cellular antenna, which is still in process of final draft. Other than that, all these items are subject to an omnibus vote, should we wish to use it. I guess the way we should proceed then, on behalf of the chair, I'd ask for a motion that we utilize the omnibus vote this evening. And then once we have that motion passed, we can then make sure that we accept the proper items and then lastly, make sure that we read quite clearly what we are voting on. So first of all, on behalf of the chair, I will entertain a motion that we use the omnibus procedure this evening.
We have a motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Moisio, to proceed with the omnibus procedure as described. Roll call.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
All right. Okay. Now that we have an omnibus procedure in place, on behalf of the chair, I'd ask each alderman once again to review this agenda, to determine whether any item deserves additional attention other than those already specified. And if so, to please note them for the record.
If there is no item that cries out for individual treatment, I would then, on behalf of the chair, entertain a motion to pass and approve the following items. A motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to waive the formal bid procedure and accept the proposal for contract 2010-14-OMC-PCB Water Treatment Environment Operation and Maintenance Services with Rivers Bend Engineering, RBE Inc., of Sturdivant, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed $43,010. Secondly, there'd be a motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to approve the proposal from Fluid Air Dynamics in Franklin Park, Illinois, to replace the existing facility compressor in the amount of $9,494. Next, there'd be a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Figueroa, to approve the city clerk's request to increase the cost per copy of birth certificates from $6 for the first copy and $2 for each additional copy to $10 for the first copy and $5 for each additional copy. Next would be a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Figueroa. Next would be a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Figaroa, to authorize the city collector to enter into a three-year contract with Penn Credit for third-party collections of age-doc accounts receivables, per the terms of Penn Credit's proposal dated January 20, 2010. There would then be a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to grant permission to the Director of Finance Administration. Excuse.
That was, that was.
I've got, no, I'm sorry, I've got Newsom. It should be Larson, seconded by Alderman Larson, pardon me.
I thought C was out.
No, I'm down on D now.
C.
C is out.
C is out.
C is out, Alderman.
On the Omnibus.
Oh, C is out.
Yes, C is out. This motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom, to grant permission to the Director of Finance Administration to solicit letter of credit pricing related to Yeoman Creek Mediation Group YCRD Financial Assurance Compliance. The next item would be a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Conken, to authorize the proper city officials to request proposals for the operation and management of the Genesee Theater, beginning August 1, 2010. The next item would be to approve payroll dated February 11, 2010. That's a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest, in the amount of $1,314,638.60. There is a similar motion to approve bills dated February 16, 2010, in the amount of $2,035,713.52, and there's also a motion to receive the monthly report from the collector's office for the month of January 2010. We then have several ordinances. There'd be a motion to approve a text amendment allowing off-track betting facilities as a conditional use in the B2 Community Shopping District, zoning calendar 2289, petitioner Art Lake. There is an ordinance on the table to approve text amendment allowing off-track betting facilities as a conditional use in the B2 Community Shopping District, zoning calendar 2288, petitioner Art Lake. There's an ordinance authorizing the issuance not, excuse me, that should not be there. There is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate at 1622 10th Street from HUD for the rather handsome sum of $1, and there's also a similar ordinance for the purchase of real estate at 1325 Brookside from HUD for the same amount of money. I would entertain, on behalf of the chair, a motion to pass and approve all of those items.
Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Now we will go to the first item that was held out from the Omnibus Agenda, which is under Public Works Committee, item A. Alderman Rivera.
Item A, it's the Jaxas Street LAPP project was bid on January the 15th of 2010 with a low bid of $913,124.50 received from Peter Baker and Sun Company. The city received two proposals to perform the construction engineering documentation and inspection services for this project. Proposals were received from McClure Engineering in the amount of $39,797.47, and from Jawalt Hamilton Associates, incorporating the amount of $50,094. Items of work will include construction, inspection, pay item quantities, and documentation, material testing, and final inspection prior to the city acceptance. I recommend that the city approve the construction engineering agreement with McClure Engineering of Waukegan, Illinois, in the amount of $39,797.47, with the actual amount determined based upon the services received. But we would like to change that end of that, on that language, to have a not to exceed a certain amount, which, Ron, could you?
Yeah, well then, what I would like to do, if I could, I would like to take a motion to amend.
Okay.
The language as you stated. If we could take that by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Figaroa.
What's realistic?
Do we have the change amount?
Right. And what, Ron, what is a realistic figure? And I know, we all know that McClure has been very good, and, you know, we trust their judgment in regards to, you know, not going over the amount that we're talking about, but we sure would like to see that language.
Yes, Alderman, thank you. Both of these proposals gave an hourly figure with an estimated number of hours for the tasks. I don't think that they're going to be exceeding this, but we can certainly add that to the contract language to be a not to exceed.
Not to exceed a certain hourly amount?
Well, the cap.
Okay.
Not to exceed the $39,797.47.
So we can say that?
We can certainly add that into the.
Alderman Tempest, did you have a comment? Alderman, Alderman Newsom.
I was wondering if we could put in there that if it's over that, that they should come back to the council first before they.
Not to exceed without council approval.
Right.
Council approval.
We can certainly include that language.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this, then? We'll take a motion to amend as follows, then. I won't read through the entirety of it, but just basically, LAPP project, construction engineering, in the amount not to exceed $39,797.47, without prior council approval.
Correct.
So we will take that motion to amend would be by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Figaroa. Roll call, please, on the amended.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Eyes have it, thank you. Now we move back to the original motion as amended. We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to approve as amended. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Thank you, the eyes have it. All right, now, we will move forward to the item that was exempted from the Finance Committee, which was item C. Alderman Needham, please.
I'm going to read to you the motion given to me by our bond counsel, Brian Grace, and changes just here, the way we voted in committee. Finance Committee recommends a motion to adopt as presented an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed, of bonds not to exceed $10 million, general obligation refunding bond, Series 2010, and a brief explanation. Those bonds, GO bonds, are Series 1998, and they were used for general infrastructure, construction of the fifth fire station, rehabilitation of the police department and communication center, beach improvements, and the 2001 A bonds were construction of New City Hall, and the city share of Yeoman Creek landfill remediation. I think over the remaining, remainder of the life of the bond, I think we will be saving $40,000 per year for the next seven years. I think that's correct. Tina? I saw move.
Move by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Do we have any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, this might be directed to Tina. Should it be issuing or reissuing? Aren't we reissuing?
No. Tina, would you mind, please, so that it will come through the system that way? I'm sorry.
It's issued, these are new bonds that would pay off the old bonds. It's not like a home where you renegotiate that loan. These are replacement bonds, so it would be issuance, not reissuance.
So we, just, I thought we were kind of refinancing some old bonds.
That's what we.
Yes. You issue new bonds, you take the money from those new bonds, and you pay off the old bonds. You can call them in.
Okay. Just a different way. Is refinance just a different terminology for?
Yes.
Legal, legal, okay, then. Just want to make it, we're refinancing, which is not, so everyone is clear, we're not issuing new bonds.
Well, we are, but we're paying off the old bonds.
Yeah, but we're refinancing, basically refinancing, but it's just a different, thank you, Tina, I just wanted to be clear.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, the eyes have it, thank you very much. We do have an executive session to go into this evening, but what we will do is, we will take the aldermen's, did I miss something? Oh, I'm sorry. Under Old Business or Communications, do we have anything? Okay, all right. Corporation Council, under New Business, would like to make a quick comment, please.
Just two matters that have come up in prior council meetings. We will have for the Judiciary Committee, a revised version of our vacant housing ordinance, which is a little tighter, a little clearer ordinance that we'll be asking the council to take a look at, to amend the prior ordinance or replace the prior ordinance with the new one. They'll also be in the Judiciary Committee, an amended gun ordinance regarding the sale, purchase of guns, that would take into consideration a recent event whereby a stolen gun was apparently sold to a consumer. This new ordinance amendment will take care of that problem.
Thank you, Corporation Council. As I said, we'll be going to the executive session, but I would like to let the aldermen have their alderman's time, and so that essentially, yes, sir?
I have a question. The ordinance under Old Business or ordinance, is it C wires? What was the reason for that during that night?
Under D?
A. Under 11A.
Okay, it's still being drafted. Yeah, it wasn't prepared, wasn't fully prepared for this evening. Sorry about that. I apologize for that. I'm not sure how that happened, sir. I do apologize. Okay.
Alderman Rivera.
Alderman Rivera, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I really enjoyed going to an event over at the Green Belt Forest Reserve to honor African-American people that are in the armed services, and it was, it was a great show. I know they honored Sergeant, Master Sergeant Gibson, but it was a really, I really enjoyed myself, and sat next to our friend Brother Blanks over there, and he gave me a lot of pointers on some things that I didn't know, so it was very interesting. I really enjoyed myself. It was two hours of truly entertainment from singers, gospel singers. It was really, really a beautiful thing to attend, so I just wanted to say I really enjoyed myself. Also, I want to echo your comments on Public Works, Mayor. They did a truly a tremendous job, and I like the way we're setting out communication, you know, in regards to parking in the streets, give the people an opportunity to move their vehicles, but I think that works very well, and I love that communication. So, great job, Tom, for the job that you and your guys are doing out there. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
I too want to commend Public Works for an outstanding job that was done during this past snowfall, but I think we also want to give a little credit to the citizens of Waukegan particularly. They, they were able to assist Public Works. I know I've talked about this many years, in the first world, we kind of implemented some things, but the citizens responded, and I think after watching how Public Works can help them get back into their spaces a lot quicker, they've caught the beat. Obviously, the compliance of it was, I think, 200% from prior years, but now that they've seen how this process truly works, you will see more, more people being in compliance with moving those cars at least the first time out, and let the big trucks come through. So, kudos not only to Tom Haggan and his team, but I think a joint partnership with our, with the citizens of Waukegan, and throughout, and I think that's throughout the city of Waukegan. Second, I want to bring up, and I don't have the date on here, yes, I do, it's a Chicago Tribune story dated February 10, 2010. I think this is a subject dear to my heart, and I want to say openly to Alderman Tempest, "Red Light Camera Law Could Take A Turn For The Better." Senators Like Devices But Wants To Make Them More Fair. Please bear with me a little bit as I read some of the things. Senator John Milliner says that if there were to put a vote today, he expects most people in Illinois would favor getting rid, I'm going to repeat that, most people in Illinois, Waukegan, would favor getting rid of red light cameras altogether. Milliner, who thinks the cameras are beneficial, which is why he instead proposed legislation in Springfield on Tuesday to intend to make them more fair. Politically, for me, it is a bold thing, I'm sorry, a bad thing to be for red light cameras, but for the safety, it is the right thing to do, argue Milliner. A Republican from Carroll Stream, for nearly 17 years, where the police chief in Elmhurst. Milliner billed would be address many of the concerns raised by camera critics in recent years regarding tickets for illegal right turns, shortened times for yellow caution lights, and difficulty in disputing tickets. Now, I won't go on to read that. I gave you the date and time. This is a very good article, and I think that the state of Illinois has done some thing, but we, from a council standpoint, particularly me, I think Alderman Tempest has been very vocal, that these red light cameras, and he mentioned in here, that it's a money-making venture only. Only thing people want, this company came in here, they went to some, and I'm going to say, some distressed neighborhoods, particularly those with low income, high-low income areas. They dropped them in there, and they said, "We're going to get you. We're going to get you for $100, then we're going to hit the fine in 30 days, another $100, and we don't care what they say." And then we're going to make it even better, we're going to make you pay for it, and then give your money back after we get our money. This senator is doing something I think we should have done a long time ago, send a message to this, this little, whatever name of this company is, and let them know, "You do have a good product, but you're milking the system, and I hope the state of Illinois, and through the Public Safety Committee, take a strong, hard look at this money-making venture, not safety. It's about making money." Now, you can make money with this, but right now, I think you're just, you're bleeding it. You're taking every dime that you can get right now, and then saying, "You know what? Three or four years, they're going to try to get rid of it anyway. We didn't take our money." But you've made it off the backs of hard-working folks, and I think it's just a disgrace. I thought I would mention it, because this senator is taking steps, something that we've talked about, and if I had a vote today, right now, for the information that was given to us about safety, I would vote no today, tomorrow, next week, because this company is doing nothing but robbing the state of Illinois, particularly the city of Waukegan. Thank you.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. I just want to add on Alderman Cunningham's initial comments about the snow removal. Thank you very much, and. Thank you very much, and also to the citizens of Waukegan, like he thanked. But also, I'd like to send some thank you to David Miley. I did get a couple of phone calls from people saying that they were very happy to receive the electronic message, so the phone systems are working, people heard about them, and they heard about the snow alert, so they were very happy, and therefore, like Alderman Cunningham said, they had the opportunities to move their cars to allow the snow removal to take place as planned, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Alderman Figaroa. I'm sorry, Alderman Moiseo.
Pass.
Alderman Figaroa. Alderman Tempest? Yes, we're very, I'm sorry, Needham, Newsom, I'm sorry. Alderman Tempest? Need some help with this? No. Okay. I'm just skipping.
Motion to get it re-upped.
My turn. Very quickly, they asked me to pass, but very, very quickly. As I've been walking around my ward, it appears to me that the people that don't shovel their sidewalks are rental units. Is there any way that somehow, they need a rental license, that part of the code is you will maintain your sidewalks and keep them shoveling? Seems so many of them, and I know which ones pretty, which ones are rental units, and they seem to be the primary non-people that don't shovel their sidewalks. And it's, I know in our block, we got two snow blowers, and everybody kind of looks out for everybody else, and it's really nice. And the other thing, I want to encourage people, and we're doing this somewhat through Neighborhood Watch, which I've encouraged, we're getting people to know their neighbors somewhat better, and boy, that's important for a community, to look out for your neighbor and know who your neighbor is. It's very, very important. And the other thing, I'll speak very briefly on annexation. I'll look you in the eye, and as far as my votes concern, welcome to Waukegan. You've been able to use all of our streets around us for all these years, you're surrounded completely by the city of Waukegan, and, you know, when my vote comes to vote, I welcome you in as a citizen of Waukegan. That's part of government, that's why the state legislature allows it. And I believe in annexation, I believe in forced annexation, I think you have to govern, you have to square off your boundary lines, and you're already paying fire protection already to gurney, so go to Waukegan instead. You will get garbage collection, which will help you, which you're paying for now, and it balances out pretty, pretty much. But if we're going to govern, as Alderman Baylen used to say, we need to govern and bring your boundaries into line. So, I understand the dilemma you may be on, and I heard you speak, and now you can hear me speak. So, thank you very much, Your Honor. Alderman Needham.
Thank you. When we talk of snow removal, we have to remember the large impact it has on our budget, the dollars we expend, whether it's manpower, trucks, wear and tear on our trucks, salt, the emergency snow message that went out, I got a lot of favorable calls also. But I have to tell you that when you talk to Public Works, and a message goes out, and people get their cars off the road, we only have to make one or two passes down these roads, not three, four, clean up on number five the next day, it's all done, bing bang boom, we're done. So, hopefully, the message is out now, even with the small snow, that people get off the streets, and we only have to clean them up once or twice. So, that's a good thing. As far as the sidewalks go, great opportunity with our neighborhood schools now for everybody to do a little more, once again, you got the snow blower, it's easy, do the extra, extra neighbor's house, or sidewalk, or what have you, because it all helps, and it keeps our kids off the street. We talked a little bit about red light cameras this evening, and it's very controversial, a lot of people think it's Big Brother. I have to tell you that the first one that was put in our city was put in my ward on Lewis and Sunset. My son, as a matter of fact, I've said this before, he, not once, but twice, got it, and went in and looked at it, said he'd, said he stopped, went in and said, "Dad, I didn't stop." Well, I had to pay, because he's going to college, so I got clipped twice. Don't have to like it, but I can tell you that I drive that way to and from work every day, and I can see people paying attention. I have a lot of people that go to the walk from the apartments, who go to the Pizza Hut, the Walgreens, the Amoco gas station, and to me, I can just tell, there's a sense of, you know, people paying attention, it's safer, in my eyes. But if you want to indulge me for a moment, Your Honor, and, you know, we had Alderman Cunningham read our article, I'd like Chief Yancey maybe to speak to a couple of the issues, and maybe get the facts on the table, and take up some of my time, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. We do have several red light cameras in the city of Waukegan. We've experienced a significant drop in our total accidents over the last several years since we've been there. We were averaging probably near 500 accidents per year. That total has decreased to about 250, and for a town of over 100,000 or near 100,000 people, that's pretty good. Basically, one of the things that we're proud of is that in 2002, there was one violent homicide or death in the city of Waukegan, where a person was killed through violent means. But what's significant about 2002, that same year, there were over six traffic fatalities where people were killed via accidents. And we, what we're trying to do is, as we bring down, or reduce the number of traffic accidents, we bring down the number of traffic fatalities, which is a benefit to our citizens, because we have fewer citizens that are, you know, dying through these type of means. So, I would encourage the council to take a close look at how the red light and traffic enforcement is benefiting our citizens.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Well, I have to just pitch in real quick, I'm in agreement, real quick, with the chief, and we are, though, looking at who has the contract. That's something that we're putting on the table, because I think the previous contract may not have been in our best interest, so we're reviewing that. Sorry, Alderman Larson, I apologize.
Alderman Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to echo Chief Yancey's comments and Alderman Needham's comments, safety first. What is the benefit of safety when you have laws that are enforced to improve public safety when it comes to your vehicle? In the last, I asked an insurance broker based in Waukegan for over 50 years, what are increased safety statistics mean to the average driver in Waukegan? We issue roughly 50,000 city stickers a year. Liability insurance costs, on the average, have gone down somewhere between $80 and $100 per vehicle owner. So, you look at that, multiplied by 50,000 stickers, and of course, there's more drivers than that, you're showing an economic benefit to the citizens of Waukegan of $5 million a year. Okay? So, that is what a well-designed program for increasing public safety means to the average citizen. It's not something we can ignore. That being said, I do want to mention that Public Safety has a meeting on Monday at 6:00, and you're always welcome to participate and lend your comments regarding public safety. My meeting will be called at 6:00 on Monday. That's all, thank you.
You, Alderman Larson, appreciate all of your comments. Now.
Your Honor, before we go, Mr. Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, will you be discussing this issue in your committee?
No.
If I'm not mistaken, this issue was put back in your committee for a consideration to reduce the fine.
Is there any new information forward?
Thank you, Alderman Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, we will take a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conkin, to go into executive session for pending and imminent litigation. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming, we appreciate your attention during the meeting. What's happening? How are you doing? Hold on, we got to go back into regular session.
I told him, I'm sorry. We've talked a long time.
Motion to go on to regular session by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
No, we don't need.
No, we don't need a roll call for that. No, that's a voice call. Don't worry about it, it's close enough. Motion, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.